Brett, just as a reminder, these are all public hearings.
I've missed those once or twice in the past, so.
Mr. Weber, we are good to go.
Very good. Thank you, John. Good evening. This is the time and place for the Grand Forks Growth Fund, a jobs development authority, meeting for Monday, June 1st. We'll begin with the quorum.
All right, Weigel? Docler?
Yeah.
Weber?
Here.
Mock?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Bean?
Here.
Mayor Brown?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Dorstad. Before we get going, I wanted to take a quick moment to note that Council Rep. Mock had mentioned some concern in the past about the transparency of the connection between Growth Fund Committee meetings and the JDA, and some of the challenges on accessing those minutes. The staff have made it so that if you go to the city website, under Meeting Agendas and Minutes, you can now find the agenda for the Growth Fund Committee, a video of those meetings, and a transcript of the minutes. So those are readily available, as available as City Council or any other committee meeting minutes or presentations. Thank you. With that, we'll start off with item 2.1, Ms. Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. The first item before you is a FlexPace loan request from Associated Potato Growers. This would be a loan that would help to reduce their interest rate on a commercial equipment loan. As you know, the EDC staff works with these businesses to put together the applications that come to the JDA, so I'm going to turn it over to Brandon to, Brendan Baumbach from the EDC, to talk about the particulars of this request.
Very good. And Brendan, if I may, I'd like to open the public hearing on item 2.1. And I believe that everyone has already heard this presentation before. So we've got Mr. Baumback here. If there are questions or concerns, otherwise, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
I'll move approval, Mr. Weber.
We have a motion for approval, a second from Mayor Brown. Any public comments available on item 2.1? Any further questions or comments on item 2.1? Hearing none? Yes, Ms. Dorstad.
I was just gonna state, I haven't received any public comments here in finance.
Very good. Thanks, Marine. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll move to item 2.2. Before we engage that, we have a request for a motion to recuse Mr. Sandy.
So move.
A motion from Ms. Mock, a second from Mayor Brown. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Recused. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing on item 2.2, a funding request for Eritonomy. Ms. Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Both item 2.2 and 2.3 from Tailory are high-tech startups that have requested funding from the Growth Fund. Both of these firms also have requested and received funding from the North Dakota LIFT program. LIFT is a bit of a sideways acronym that is Innovation Technology Loan Fund. The Growth Fund Committee did hear from Josh Teigen from Department of Commerce who manages that LIFT program to give a little more background on that. But the upshot here is that these companies have requested loans from the Growth Fund. The terms of those loans would mirror the terms that are offered by the LIFT program, though the amounts requested are half of what was received from the North Dakota State Program. In addition, both of these companies have offered the option for the JDA to convert that debt equity to debt instrument to an equity-type investment. This was kind of, I think, they're appreciative of the Growth Fund hearing this request and recognize that the best opportunity here is is in the growth of these companies, and if that growth really takes off, I think they wanted to generously share that, those opportunities with the JDA. With that, we do have presentations from both representatives from both firms, Josh Reedy from Eritonomy and Brianna Soski for Tailory. Before we get to that, I'm going to again turn it over to ED staff for a little more background.
Very good. And as has been mentioned, the applicants have made the time to join us tonight, although I believe everyone in attendance on the JDA has heard these presentations at least once before. We do have some new matters from EDC regarding the terms. But with that, Mr. Baumback or Mr. Lund?
Sure. Chair Weber, I'm Brendan Baumback here, Business Development Manager from the EDC. If it makes sense to you that we could take the presentations similar as before and then work towards the description of the finances after the presentations?
Let me ask if anyone is interested in the presentations or has any questions for the applicants, having heard those presentations before. I've heard them, and maybe I'm making an assumption that we've all heard them. JDA members, anyone interested in hearing the presentations tonight? They're exciting presentations. It's amazing, the economic development that's occurring in our community. I believe we've received a green light in terms of the application, so I'm thinking that what we just need tonight is some clarification on some of the issues around the financing. If that's all right.
That's all right. Chairman Weber, this is Keith Lund. It looks like Brandon may have frozen up with an internet connection, so if you can hear me, okay, I'll jump in and kind of run through, I guess, the funding request.
Very good.
So again, thank you, Chairman Weber, the Jobs Development Authority. The requests by both companies, as Meredith Richards indicated, are structured at 50%, each received in support from the North Dakota's Innovation Technology Legacy Fund, or LIFT, as you might have heard. Meredith also mentioned that we were fortunate to have Mr. Teigen, Josh Teigen, who is Director of that program, joined the May 18th Growth Fund Committee to provide an overview of the intent and how that program is structured. The fund was essentially created to support commercialization of innovative technology and support the growth of technology companies in the state. It's very important, from a North Dakota standpoint, to diversify really a way of agriculture and energy. Two-thirds of our economy in the state of North Dakota is based on those commodities, and it's important for the Grand Forks region to invest also in these types of companies or to support them, to grow the concentration of technology careers in the region. Loans are, these loans are structured favorably from a cash flow standpoint when they are in high-growth mode, but are structured as debt to preserve the Growth Funds or the JDA's rights as creditor, and the term sheets are included in the staff report. And they are specifically no payments and no interest for 36 months, and 2% interest accrues in months 36 to 60, so I guess years four and five, and a balloon payment after 60 months or after five years. And that is a fundamental loan that you were being asked to consider this evening. As is practice and policy, both companies presented their loan requests to the EDC Board of Directors on May 7th. There was discussion about the exciting nature of the companies, the innovative products and services, as well as their business model. ED support, EDC Board supported forwarding their applications to the Growth Fund Committee for consideration based on their debt financing request. In addition, the EDC Board recommended the Growth Fund consider an investment in the companies that could result in a greater return should these companies realize the projected success. So we discussed that, of course, at both companies. Both companies have been raising funds in a pre-equity structure through the simple agreement for future equity. This is a model that can accept non-equity investment prior to determining a company's valuation. Investments made within the companies may, emphasis on may, or may not, convert to an equity investment under certain circumstances. Both companies have offered to provide the JDA an option at your sole discretion within three to years, within three years of funding the loan, to convert the loan to an investment using that simple agreement for future equity agreement included in your staff report. The city attorney has concerns about the agreement that he details in a memo that's included in the staff report, and I share those concerns if this were to be the primary investment vehicle. It is, however, an option that can, at your sole discretion, be exercised should the opportunity to realize a significantly greater return present itself, and you would consider that to be a wise investment. I think I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, and be happy to answer any questions of the, of the committee.
Any questions for Mr. Lund? Any comments? Mr. Bean?
Yeah, I think I wanted to make sure that I understood the concern that Mr. Swanson had, and it seems, it appears that that issue is resolved. Is that right?
Mr. Swanson?
Chairman, whoever, members of the, of the JDA, the terms I had previously were primarily with regard to the vehicle being used in an attempt to acquire equity. At the time that I was first consulted on this, the proposal was an equity proposal and not a debt or loan proposal. That led to the lengthy memo that I wrote because I thought there was a misunderstanding or misperception as to what the agreement, which was called a safe agreement, which is nothing safe about it, entailed. So I've laid those concerns out. It's up for the JDA to determine whether that's an appropriate vehicle for potential equity investment. The situation has changed from when I first was consulted, and now that you have a creditor's position as opposed to an intent to convert to equity. So the, the issues with regard to the use of this form of potential equity investment still exist, but I think the circumstances have changed because you are now actually taking a creditor's position. The decision in the future is whether you wish to alter that position, may want to consider the impacts of the form of agreement. Other than that, I can answer any questions, but I think, I think it's fairly well laid out. I was concerned also that the JDA have access to our memo.
Very good. Any question from JDA members for Mr. Swanson? Mr. Bean, did that answer your questions, your concerns?
I think it did. I think the other thing that was mentioned earlier is the ability within, was it the next three years to convert the loan? Is that how that was?
At, at the sole discretion of the JDA is my, is my understanding, yes.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yes. Did we have any questions or comments from public?
I've received no comments.
Very good. With that, I'll close the, the public hearing and be looking for further questions or comments of the applicants, or be looking for a motion. And this is just for item 2.2. Motion from Mayor Brown?
A motion.
And a second from Mr. Bean. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Very good. With that, we'll open the public hearing on 2.3, Funding Request for Tailory. Essentially, a very similar situation. We've heard the presentation before. It's received a green light each time. The funding mechanism for a fundamental loan or the equity investment option is identical to what we've just discussed with item 2.2. Are there any questions or comments from JDA members for, for Ms. Soski? Are there any public comments on item 2.3?
None received.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, please, Mr. Sandy.
If I may, I think Ms. Soski has a great business plan and a great concept. I really wish her well, and we'll move approval.
Very good. We have a move, motion to approve, second from Mayor Brown. Further questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Very exciting night for the JDA, actually. Both the new funding mechanism, that option, and two fantastic local businesses committed to staying in our community and growing their entrepreneurial activities. Mr. Phelan?
I would, I would maybe have you say, before we get into Amy, with the 2.1, maybe you want to make a few words about our agri-business too. I know Mr. Torgerson, I think, left us, but.
Yes.
Say a few words on that.
Very good. This is, you're right. That kind of got breezed over a little bit quickly. This is kind of a classic JDA work, looking to leverage and harness our regional economy and to support that in a value-add way. A very exciting project there as well. So we wish them a better harvest this year. Yes. And with that, we'll open, was there anything else you'd like to add to that, Mr. Phelan?
I just wanted to, just if, I didn't want to leave 2.1 alone.
Very good. I appreciate it.
Saying some nice words.
Um, we'll open the public hearing on 2.4, the match request for EDA, Build to Scale Application, Center for Innovation. And that's, Ms. Richards or Mr. Phelan?
I'll kick it off, Mr. Weber. Number one, I totally agree with you. Item two and three were really exciting tech ventures that we're partners on, and it goes to what Mayor Brown's been working on with diversifying our economy, moving forward with a more of a tech cluster in our community, and those are, and homegrown, locally grown companies as we move forward. And as part of that, we've been, we've been really focused on the tech hub in the downtown. And obviously, we discussed the Grand Forks Herald Building as that, I will call it Business Incubator or Tech Accelerator, with partners like UND and EDC, Grand Forks Public, and others that would be that centerpiece for that. And along the way, we've had an opportunity to work with Ms. Whitney from the Center of Innovation and the University of North Dakota and private developers who want to partner, I would say, and really supporting that, that idea and that venture. And Ms. Whitney was here discussing earlier in March, and she has good news to report to us. So I'd like to let her provide some good news of where we're at with this application, and then further have Mr. Lund talk about some of the private investment that we've been able to secure as part of this grant request. But with that, I'd ask Ms. Whitney to proceed, please.
Ms. Whitney?
Thank you, Mr. Phelan, on that. And yes, I do come back before you all with some very exciting news that we are within just a few weeks of actually submitting a final application. We were invited to submit a full application to the EDA for the downtown tech hub concept. And, you know, really, the vision for what we wanted to really pull together is a necessary and needed resource for the community came about in a, in a few different ways. You know, we have, in this region, a lot of really great incubation for startup resources and a great entrepreneurial ecosystem and a growing tech sector. But it's also something that we've learned from, especially working with Tailory and Eritonomy. We've learned there are some gaps in that ecosystem that this particular opportunity can provide. You know, we got the news that a full application was something that was of interest to the EDC, to the EDA. We were only 25% of the concept proposals were asked to move forward to a full application. So we already know that we're within the, the top quarter of the full, of the applications that were submitted earlier that were moved forward. So, you know, really, what, the good news is that, you know, this will be in its full proposed format, a $1.2 million grant application. Actually, I can, I'll share my screen if you would like for a moment, and I can highlight where we're at with everything and what it's looking like. And let's see, I will share my screen quickly if I can, and you can see where we are at. Let's see if my screen will do this. So what you will see is that with this $1.2 million proposal, for every dollar of EDA funds, we can leverage $1. With every local fund, local dollar that we raise, we can leverage a dollar of EDA funds. So we have secured $100,000 in local matching funds from the EDA. We are very close to the private sector matches of $200,000, and Mr. Lund can talk about that as well. And then what we are looking for is support from the city of Grand Forks and the, and the Growth Fund, JDA, for the additional $300,000, because we are very close to being able to secure the full $1.2 million through this grant opportunity if support is given today through this request. The idea being is that the downtown tech hub will provide both startup accelerator model for programming and workforce upskill training as part of the downtown tech hub focused and housed in the Herald Building downtown. So with that, I know, Mr. Lund, you, if you want to kind of celebrate the success we've had far in raising some of the match funds from our private sector partners, and then Todd and Meredith, if, I know you had some additional comments related to the $300,000 and how that was going to be broken out.
Very good. Can you hear me all right?
I'm sharing my screen.
Mr. Lund, yes?
Yes, thank you. Well, we, the Grand Forks region, EDC, were very, very proud to support this effort to try to staff, I guess, the effort of growing and supporting technology companies in the region. I'm sorry, guys, I know I got some sunshine in through the dr- the blinds aren't closed. I'll do my best. So, so obviously, the University of North Dakota is looking at funding, and there's a request of the Jobs Development Authority, but we thought that this would be a much stronger application locally here, as well as to the Economic Development Administration, if we had private sector buy-in. And so Brandon Baumbach and myself sent information and requests to have conversations with, I would say, maybe 10 or 12 or 13 companies. Here we go again, sun keeps moving, to see if they would financially support or participate in this exciting initiative. And our goal was to have seven companies supported by $30,000 investment, $10,000 per year. And I'm very happy to say that we received six out of the seven targeted commitments. So we have raised from the private sector $180,000 that would match, hopefully, the city or JDA's investment, as well as the University of North Dakota's. We have a few requests that are yet are being considered and a few conversations to have. So while, you know, there's no such thing as a sure thing, we're optimistic that we'll receive our goal. And one of the exciting things that I And one of the exciting things that I'd just like to share with you is that, uh, the, the yeses we received were very quick. And even two of those yeses we received were even without a presentation. I think the community is really excited about and hungry to support this type of activity and the growth of, uh, technology companies in our region. So I think you have the support of the business community for, for a project like this. And we're just very pleased to be a partner with the Center for Innovation and the City Grand Forks, uh, and the University of North Dakota in this endeavor. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask for some clarification on the EDA funds? The, are these EDA funds administered by the city?
Hmm, no. This will be EDA funds that will be administered through the University of North Dakota. So the Center for Innovation and the University of North Dakota will take the, the lead on managing fiscal responsibilities and overseeing any personnel that are hired underneath this to, to, you know, really accomplish the programming of the downtown tech hub.
Very good. And the three hundred thousand that's being, uh, requested from the city, this would be one hundred thousand a year over the next three years? Is that still the plan?
That, that is correct, uh, Chairman Weber or President Weber. Um, we've broken it down in your staff report. So it's a hundred thousand year over three years. Um, you know, working with Amy and her team, you know, it would be best if, and certainly in kind, sponsorships could be provided, but we're trying to make it, uh, as, as part of this application, application as clear as possible and as, as simple as possible. So what we have in front of you, we have pre-programmed some of our out-year internship programs, um, to this particular program. So, um, we can lighten the load on, on growth fund money. So what we're, um, asking is that we would redirect thirty-five thousand a year from our internship program to this grant application. And so that would be a total of a hundred and five thousand dollars over three years. The other, uh, amount would come from sixty-five thousand dollars per year from the growth fund to equal over three years, a hundred and ninety-five thousand. Um, that will pay for, there will be a director that will support this program. There will also be additional interns that will help support this. So really, we're just redirecting, uh, interns, some of our internship money to this specific program. And, um, that's in light of this is really a priority. We're still going to have interns. And there's other opportunities that we can have. Um, a couple of the other things that we have been working on with U N D is one, um, a PhD trainee ship, um, program that we're working on, and we've worked on, uh, beginning this year and next. That's another opportunity that we could amend in the future in years, you know, two and three that could qualify. And, uh, certainly our goal is to fit up the, the Herald Building and, and we intend to, um, um, as part of the CARES Act, uh, EDA has funding for capital and the equipment improvements. We're business incubators and accelerators, of which our Herald really fits really well, especially with this grant application. And that's an eighty-twenty grant application. So in parallel with this, we're, you know, looking at moving forward with a grant application that will help support the construction and the fed up of that also. Um, but in year one, you know, we'll have to see where this fits in the downtown area because a Herald building will not be up and running. So it really fits a lot well, and it fits with our, what our federal government is doing, um, post-COVID, where we need to move our economy and all the things that we were working on, um, pre-COVID. To be frank, you know, we just probably lost five years of accelerating from one type of economy to the new. And so thankfully, we were working on all these things so that we can really move forward with where the world's going and where the U S is going and where Grand Forks needs to go. So that's how we did trying to, um, kind of take existing money. How should we program that over three years? And then what would be that added amount? So that's what we, we, we've done in the last week or so.
And ask what percentage of the internship funds are being, uh, shifted to this project?
Um, right now, we, we anticipate over the next, uh, three-year period, we're at a little over a hundred thousand now, and we were going to glide it up to a hundred and fifty thousand. So you can see kind of where that dollar mount is going. So it's significant, but keep in mind, uh, this program, you have two to three interns as part of this program. So really, we're just moving entrepreneurial startup type interns, whether they're from the business school or wherever else that's, we're just reprogramming them into here.
Very good. Uh, questions from other JDA members?
Mr. Weber?
Yes, Mr. Swanson.
Uh, just a question, the dollars for the city intern, are those JDA dollars or are they other dollars?
Those would be other dollars. Um, Howard?
Will that be approved? Then the JDA is only being asked then to approve the sixty-five thousand dollars a year for three years tonight. Will there be separate approval given for the internship dollars?
We, we should do that in, and, uh, I think we can bring that in, um, probably in a future city coun- council meeting, but that would be our intent. If the JDA signed off on this portion, then we would bring it to, probably not tonight, city council, even though we could, uh, unless the city council would want to add it on, or I'd bring it to the next city council.
Thank you.
Very good. And, uh, I'm to, just to be safe, uh, I'm not sure if I opened the public hearing on two point four. I'll open that now. Uh, were there any public comments on this?
No, none.
Um, we'll close the public hearing. Um, any further comments or questions from JDA members?
I had a real quick question.
Please, Mr. Sandy.
Uh, I think this is a great concept. Um, I'm fully supportive of it. I would like to know, um, just for my own benefit, what a measure of success is. I don't need to know what that is today. But at some point, I would, I would be great to know how are we going to determine whether the money that, uh, citizens of Grand Forks are putting in this is doing what we want it to do. I'm sure Ms. Whitney has a plan for that, or it will be worked out because they're, of course, going to want this program to go on more than three years. And so they're going to be looking for measures of success as well. If we could hear what they are sometime in the future, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sandy, I can give you a couple of measures of success off the top of my head that we're actually writing into the ground. Um, one of them is, you know, the obvious, if we're trying to create tech startups, we'll be looking and, and we actually have set some target goals for how many startups we believe we can actually accelerate over the course of three years. That will be one measure of success. And then the other one, to your point of sustainability, um, one of the, the important goals of this grant is to identify additional, um, support to fund the longer term operation. So, um, our goal and we're setting goals within the grant to identify how many partners we would like to bring on, um, to offset the costs of running this particular program. And if, in, in securing those, we would know that there's some traction in the, uh, support this vision. You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you. That was very clear. Um, in, any further questions or comments? Because I didn't invite a, a mo- motion.
Move approval.
Motion for Mr. Sandy. Second from Mayor Brown. Very good. And, uh, further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion passes, Mr. Phelan. I apologize.
As we, as we, uh, carry out the city council next, if, uh, Mayor wouldn't mind asking the city council if we could add this, um, since we've gotten positive approval here for the cities, city of Grand Forks portion, um, just so we can close, put a period on it tonight. If you wouldn't mind suggesting that at our city council.
Very good. And.
Would you like me to stay for that or?
Everyone's welcome to stay through the entire council meeting, of course.
Mr. Weber, just for a point of clarification, that's, uh, that's merely in a, a busch, a budget adjustment. We're not asking for any new money. So as long as that's clear, Mr. Mayor, tonight, we're just asking to rearrange some dollars in the current budget. Thank you.
And we, we'll, we'll need to suspend the agenda, add it, or do? Hey, I'll ask you for that after we suspend the agenda. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Uh, one more time, a, a quick reminder, uh, there was lots of good news here tonight. We kind of expedited the process because many of us have heard the presentations, uh, sometimes two or three times. If, uh, anyone is interested in those presentations or more detail, uh, the May eighteenth growth fund meeting, uh, the, uh, agenda, video and the minutes are available online on the city website under, uh, meetings and agenda, uh, meeting agendas and minutes. And with that, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn the JDA. Motion for Mr. Brown, second from his doctor, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thanks.
Mayor Brown, if I could, uh, just give a couple of seconds while I, uh, move people around getting ready for the council meeting. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I'm all cut up. Go ahead.
City of Grand Forks, proud home of the University of North Dakota City Council meeting, Monday, the first twenty twenty, as everybody calls to order. Welcome and roll call.
Okay. Michael, Dockler? Yeah. Weber? Mr. Weber, are you still on? Um, Mock? Here. Marshall?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
And Mr. Weber, are you there so we can get you on the record? Thank you. We have a call.
Maureen, he's still connected to the meeting. He must have stepped away. I will let you know when he comes in.
All right, thank you.
One point two is pledge allegiance. Please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic we live in, one nation, under God. And justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll go to one point three.
Um, here's announcements.
Thank you. There are very few ways to say this, but it's been a tough week. Last week, we lost a beloved officer in our police department, Officer Cody Holtie. Such a tragic event, we are all heartbroken. There'll be memorial service tomorrow at one P M. At the Ralph Lego Center Arena. Visitation is from ten to noon tomorrow, and both are open to the public. Sadly, we lost two airmen at the Grand Forks Air Force Base as part of a shooting event today as well. Ann and I, along with the entire Grand Forks region, are devastated. The men and women of Grand Forks Air Force Base are not just friends and neighbors, they are family. And today, we lost two members of our Grand Forks family. Tragic, senseless, devastating. There are only so many words to describe it. Our prayers are with the airmen and their families in this tough time. Let's have a moment of silence for Officer Holtie and our two fallen airmen. Given the tough times, this is why it is good to have the culture we have in Grand Forks. We respond to tough circumstances by supporting one another, playing acts of kindness, acting courageously, and we continue our job in a professional manner, no matter what the world hands us. I've been so impressed with the continuity of our local government operations and the professionalism shown by all the departments, given these circumstances. I'm so proud of our police department. Amidst all that is going on with the mourning of the loss of Officer Holtie and the planning for his memorial service, our police department and the county sheriff's office sent a contingency down to Fargo over the weekend to help their first responders keep peace in their community. I'm proud of this community. You supported our police department and all of us in our time of need. This town turned blue. The flowers, the balloons, the philanthropy, and it's all been truly breathtaking in how you responded, case in point, as to why this place, Grand Forks, is special. Next, today, we welcome President Andrew Armacost as a new president at the University of North Dakota, and I look forward to working with him in his administration in the coming months. I want to give a special thank you to Dr. Joshua for serving as interim president and congratulate him on being appointed chief health strategist for the state of North Dakota. Governor Burgum is a wise man for his choice, and I know Dr. Win will be the key influence in our statewide efforts against the COVID nineteen pandemic. Amongst all this, we're fighting a pandemic. We know this has caused huge economic hardship for our local businesses, and our healthcare system is no different. They had to hear the news of the layoffs at Altrude, but I fully support them as they are forced to make these difficult decisions. We need to always remember, we're in this together, we'll get through this together, and together, we'll emerge stronger. Item two awards presentations, appointments or proclamations, two point one.
A COVID update.
Director Swanson?
Good evening, Mayor Brown and members of the city council. Uh, there is a presentation that's uploaded to the city website, and it also was sent to you this afternoon for your information. I wanted to focus, uh, a little bit less on the data this evening and more on the activities of the health department. And so I will go through it really quickly. Uh, you can go to the next slide, uh, John. We are, um, this is the data, and I won't dive into that too much. You can review it. You can also see it on the city, or excuse me, the North Dakota Department of Health website. So if you go to the next, uh, slide, this is where we are in North Dakota, where are at the low risk or green, which has some changes based on, uh, gathering sizes and capacity for restaurants and large gatherings. And this was all taken into consideration when planning, uh, the funeral for Officer Holtie tomorrow. You can go to the next slide, please. Uh, these are some of the things that the health department is focusing on right now and some updates. I know people are always interested in testing, and testing, uh, occurred on Saturday at the Northland's Rescue Mission by Spectra Health, and we supported that as well with some staff. We've been working on testing processes at the Grand Forks County Correctional Center, and inmates will now be able to be transferred to the state penitentiary, and will need testing before they move. You can go to the next slide. Uh, this is pretty much a thirty thousand foot look at what we're doing today. So I just included some highlights. We currently don't have anyone in our non-congregatization or quarantine. And probably most importantly, and what you're interested in right now, is our COVID-related expenses we submitted to both the county and to the city for reimbursement for potential, uh, FEMA reimbursement. And then we also did receive notification of our CARES Act funding awarded to the Grand Forks Public Health Department for reimbursable expenses, and those will be through December thirtieth. Uh, I'll be bringing that forward to the committee of the whole next week with a budget amendment and a document that outlines the allowable expenses. And you can go to the last slide then. Uh, these are some of our future activities. And then also lastly, uh, with respect to masks, we just want to ensure that people understand that COVID is still out there. Still, our best tools are masks, are face coverings and social distancing or physical distancing. And we just wanted to remind people of the appropriate ways to wear masks. So this is from the North Dakota Department of Health, but is on the city webpage. And that's all I have for this evening. I wanted to be brief, uh, because I know you have a lot on your agenda, but I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any, any questions for Director Swanson? Thank you. Maureen?
Okay, and I'm just going to give you, um, a, a brief financial update for COVID-related expenses incurred to date. Uh, so Mayor Brown, members of, of council, um, I will bring that summary to you. I'm going to share my screen here, um, this one moment. All right, so with this screen, as, uh, you can see, we've developed, um, the spreadsheet, uh, that we will maintain going forward, um, with these coronavirus grant, uh, expenditure tracking tool. Uh, so from left to right, you can see that we've listed the, the different programs that are available to us. Um, just so you know, these are all federal funds, um, that run through the state. Um, from left to right then, with the, the CARES, um, coronavirus relief fund, um, then FEMA, we have the CARES money for public transit, the CAREC D B G funds, uh, the CARES money, uh, that Debbie or Ms. Swanson just, um, briefed you on with public health, and then also Department of Justice, the D O G, um, has received, um, been awarded a grant. Uh, some of these programs have already been brought to you, um, separately, such as the public transit and C D B G. Um, as Public Health Director Debbie Swanson had stated that she will be bringing forward, uh, to you a budget amendment for the million fifty-six thousand, uh, dollar grant, uh, for public health. Um, she's looking at next Monday, June eighth, Cowan, and the June fifteenth city council meeting. But tonight, I wanted to focus on, uh, an update based on the expenditures incurred that we are requesting reimbursement through, uh, FEMA and the coronavirus relief fund of approximately, as you can see there in the bottom left, the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. of approximately, as you can see there in the bottom left, the $475,000 roughly. This is further broken down then, as you can see by department, for expenses that we've incurred. This will continue, of course, to be updated as we go through this pandemic. And spreadsheet is set up in a way as to not allow any expenditures being requested for more than one program. The detail in this update is related to, as you can see, the, those two columns, FEMA and the CARES Coronavirus Relief Funds. We've been asked to meet a June 3 deadline to the Office of Management and Budget for expenses that we've incurred up to date. This is, we've been placed with a quick turnaround, but I did want to come to you and just provide you a quick update here. The numbers may adjust just slightly as we will be submitting this by Wednesday, but approximately, it's, it's very close. This does cover everything that we are able to process in this tight timeline for expenditures through May 31st. There will be another opportunity for future application for reimbursement, but this will give you an idea of where we're sitting to date. The Office of Management and Budget is requesting applications first be run through FEMA. So I just wanted to make you aware of that before looking at the Coronavirus Relief Funds. This request comes in effect to maximize FEMA dollars and leverage as much as the federal money as, as possible. So, so that's why they are putting it through in this manner. There is a match involved with the FEMA dollars, and some items will be eligible on the CARES versus the FEMA program. We've structured this spreadsheet for now, and we'll adjust as, as we know more. Basically, a 75-25 split. It is being allowed with the CARES, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, to pay for that local FEMA match. So although it's a 75-25, they have allowed those care funds to be used to pay for that FEMA match. The expenses incurred to date have ranged from sanitation supplies, the floor markings, the signage, to telework equipment, to COVID leave and overtime. You can see, like I said, by department to date what that has added up to, but we will, like I said, continue to update this and through the process and keep you updated as we go forward. I can certainly address them now or follow up.
Thank you. Any questions for Maureen? Thank you. Next, we'll go to 2.2.
We have a census update.
Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Say, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on where we're at since we last presented to you two weeks ago. The numbers continue to roll in on, on responses to the census. The U.S. now is at a 60.4%, that's up slightly, about 2% roughly. North Dakota is at 59.5%, so just slightly smaller than the, or slightly less than the national average. Grand Forks is at 67.1%, which is, which is good, but we still need to get that number up. Every dollar counts. And UND is about 45.1%, that's, that's up 1% from two weeks ago. And the Grand Forks Air Force Base is up 2% at 39.6% as of today. The census has resumed delivery of packets to those that do not receive mailings at direct addresses, homes. So tho, those would be things like PO boxes. And the last item is workers will be out to those that do not get the responses in. Workers will be out August 11th to the end of October, so be ready for that. And, and we're hoping our, our responses before that get even higher. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Brooks? Mr. Weber.
Are we able to work with the sororities or fraternities or other student organizations to try to bump the UND numbers?
Yeah, there, there's a variety of ways that both Brad and Stephanie have been working with UND. They have committees set up. Some of that is done directly through UND itself. They've worked with the Staff Senate and those types of things. But yes, they've, they've had contacts with all of those, and, and I can get you some of those direct names and, and who they're representative of through email.
Not necessary, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Point three.
Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment Plant Startup Update.
Melanie.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we just wanted to share with you that the conventional treatment side of the water plant is beginning to treat water. The staff is working through each process of this treatment train, as well as doing water quality during each step of the way. We're going to be ready to put this water from the new plant out into the distribution system within the next couple of weeks. So in order to do this, we need to keep working at the existing facility downtown. Our staff will be working both 24/7 at both facilities for about two weeks at minimum. And that, we had planned to start today, but we pushed that back just a few days. I do have Sherry Ettleblut, the senior project manager with Alman Shooting Construction Engineers, available if there's questions from council. She's on the line. So if, if you guys have any questions about what we're doing at the water plant or what's going on, we'd be more than happy to answer those for you, Mayor and members of the council.
Thank you, Melanie. Any questions, Mr. Sandy?
I'd just like to say congratulations. This project really has been about as smooth a major construction project as you could ever imagine. When you think of the pure magnitude of the facility and then all the complexities of what we're doing, it's amazing. And of course, our contractors should be commended for all their hard work. The construction managers at risk have done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Weber.
Ms. Parvi, I'm guessing that certainly the intention is for this to be as seamless as possible for the end user. But as, as a consumer, what kinds of, what, what might we expect?
Actually, Councilmember Weber, we really would expect that the consumer wouldn't really even notice a change. So we'll let you know when we are blending. What I think the intent really there is to have some water from the existing plant with the new plant be in the distribution system. We continue to just monitor it with those water quality parameters, and you really shouldn't notice anything but maybe an improvement with the taste, so.
Thank you, Melanie. Any further questions or comments?
Water already tastes pretty good to me, Mayor, so.
Finally, it does. After this break. Thank you. Next, we'll go to 2.4.
Action update on city's area transit facility rehab and expansion.
Burgum.
Mayor, members of the city council, John, if you want to pull up those pictures that we have. We're just going to show you some pictures as our project's beginning to wind down. We've been out of the building for 13 months, and now things are starting to come together, and we're starting to get back in the facility. Not sure if, uh... There we go. Okay, next slide to John. This is the outside of the building, looking from the north as you're coming down South 48th Street. You'll see this, it's kind of a hidden view because they have some trees that they will have to be put up in this area there. Next slide, John. This is a view of the front of the building. It has been expanded by about 26 feet out to the front and about another 30 feet out to the side on this facility. Next one, John. This says you come into the front office of the building, you'll see the lobby area. We designed it so that it would look like you were coming in off of a streetscape. You'll see the crosswalk sign with the labels on the floor. Kind of a unique way of putting it. There is some minor work left to be done in the building. Behind the glass panels is workstations that we have set up available for extra work that needs to be done, such as when finance shows up, or we have our federal partners show up, and they need some places to work, they can work back there. Next one, John. Can't see it very well, but there is a sign that, this sign will be lit up. It'll turn kind of a yellow color once it's lit up, and it'll have the reception area on it. This is kind of the front picture of it. Next slide. This is our lobby area. We took this picture and had the picture enhanced, enlarged, so that we could put it on the walls inside the lobby area. We also have another one that is over in our conference room area, kind of showing you some of the, the old views of the bus service that we've had for many, many years. Next slide. This again is the conference area. You'll see the slide there in the background. That is one of our trolley buses that originally was in Grand Forks. If you ever want to see it, it is now originally down in Denver at the Spaghetti Factory downtown. And it does still say Grand Forks Rail Company on it. So this is our conference room. Next slide. This is the picture view of our dispatch area where all of our dialer ride services are performed. We have four workstations in this office. It is capable, if something did happen to our PSEP center within 15 minutes, we could be up and running and having PSEP in this area if we needed to. Next slide. This is just another view of that same area. So there's enough to have six workstations in this area, and we can make some adjustments so we could put in eight if we needed to. Next slide. This is a picture of the employees' break room area. We still have some minor work here, furniture that still has to be put in this area, but this will be their separate breakware area away from any customers or anybody that's coming into the building. Next slide. Again, this is another shot from the hallway, looking back through the lobby area. You'll kind of see some of the offices in the background there. Next slide. Some of the office areas that we have, they're all open. There are glass walls in the place. You can't hide anywhere in the facility at all. Next slide. This is a shot from upstairs, kind of looking down over the shop area. This is a storage area that we have upstairs. You can see some of the work that still has to be done in the shop area there. Next slide. This is the parts room. We have just about doubled the size of our parts room from what it originally was. Next slide. View of the shop. These guys were getting ready to stripe the floors there and stuff. Kind of a bad timing when we took the picture. He was started blowing all the dust around. But we did add on 77 and a half feet onto the back end for storage for the buses that we have. And next slide. And this is a shot that we took today. You can kind of see, looking from the rear of the building, all the way towards the front of the building. And you can see all the floors are striped now. And that's pretty much it. If there's any questions?
Most impressive. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Sandy, thumbs up. And Mr. Weber. So you got praise and your review. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And, and just to let you know that with this project, we are $64,000 under budget, and we should be able to close this out in the next two weeks.
Well, thank you very much. Most impressive. Next, we go to 2.4.
A proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month.
Immigrant Heritage Month is June 2020. Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, immigrants continue to grow businesses, innovate, strengthen our economy, and create American jobs in Grand Forks, North Dakota. Immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation. Immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but have also championed to create a fair and more just society for all Americans. The immigrant community of Grand Forks, whose experiences, ideas, and perspectives enrich our collective identity, as and will continue to enhance the character of our city. Now therefore, Michael Brown, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, here by, in June 2020, has Immigrant Heritage Month in Grand Forks and call on his citizens to join in this recognition and celebration. Next, we go to item three, public hearings, a second of the ordinances. 3.1.
Yep, 3.1, a public hearing in action on 2020 to 24 consolidated plan, citizen participation plan, analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, and 2020 annual action plan, including CDBG CV funds.
Well, Meredith, if you want to start, then we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as, as Maureen said, this approval encompasses both our, some of our long-term planning documents, as well as our 2020 projects, including the CARES funding projects. Most of the discussion at the Committee of the Whole meeting last week revolved around the bricks and mortar approval process. And in response to some questions about funding projects that would benefit other taxing entities, we did provide a, a funding history back to year 2004, those bricks and mortar applicant agencies. Just to clarify, the, the funding history that provided was certainly not comprehensive and was just limited to those five bricks and mortar applicants and, and their bricks and mortar funding history. In any case, in, in response to some of those concerns about, is it appropriate use of this funding? There was discussion after the meeting, as well as during the meeting, between myself and Mr. Sandy and Mr. Weigel in terms of, you know, how can we avoid this situation in the future? And I suggested that prior to advertising for the 2021 CDBG program, we have this discussion at, at the council level, and if council should choose to set a policy to exclude other taxing entities, then we would know before we open up the application process. With that as background, I'm certainly open to any questions, but you're right, Mayor, we are here to hold a public hearing on both the, the long-term documents, as well as our 2020 budget. And then assuming there is approval, then staff will submit all those documents to HUD.
Thank you. Open the public hearing on 3.1. Maureen.
Mayor, no, no comments received on these.
Okay, so I'll close the period, the public hearing on 3.1. Council comments on 3.1?
We have approval. Excuse me.
Weber, Marshall.
Thank you. I would first like to make the motion to approve this item. And I also wanted to thank Ms. Richards for the hard work on getting to the bottom of some answers to questions about it and for continuing to lead a very good process that has resulted in wonderful support for entities within our community. So thank you.
So Ms. Marshall motions, and then Mr. Weber's seconds. They're correct. Discussion, hearing, not all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Carrie's, thank you. 3.2.
Determine insufficiency of protest on paving street lighting project 8180, District 754, paving and street lighting, 36th Avenue South, South 15th Street to Washington. This was tabled from May 4. We have received no protest.
I'll open that public hearing on 3.2.
And no public comments.
I'll close the public hearing on 3.2. Council comments on 3.2?
Move approval.
Second.
Sandy motioned. Who's the other one who motioned?
Ken.
I seconded.
Oh, Mr. Vian, thank you.
Mr. Vian.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post carries, thank you. Item four, who would like action items pulled for discussion? I will pull for 0 and 4.1. Any other action items to be pulled for discussion?
Do we need to suspend the agenda to bring that JDA move?
Bring up a motion to suspend the agenda.
I'll move to suspend the agenda.
Sandy, do you second that then?
I'll second, and it's related to intern, intern finances for next year, correct?
Okay, so we're suspending the agenda to add this item to the action items.
Yes, I'll second that.
Motion to second to suspend the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Has to be unanimous. Thank you. So now the motion, the agenda is suspended. What would you like to add to the agenda, Mr. Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I would like to, for consideration, we adjust the budget, the 2020 budgets, to move $35,000 from the city intern program to the EDA grant. Those, we would redistribute those funds to people that would be interns for, to go along with the EDA grant application that we approved at the JDA. $35,000 for next year and also for the following two years, if we would build that into the budget.
Thank you. You have a second, Mr. Weber, I think. And that would be item 4.8, correct, Mr. Swanson? So we have a motion to add this. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Okay, this is added to the action items. Anyone else like action items to be pulled? I will pull for 0 and 4.1. That leaves for 2, for 3, for 4, for 5, for 6, for 7, and for 8. The motion is second. The motion is second. Whoever nods, yes, Ms. Dockler seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post carries. Thank you. Four point zero.
Consideration of extension of public health emergency.
Mr. Swanson.
Mayor Brown, members of the council. The mayor has initially issued a public health emergency based upon the COVID nineteen circumstances. That declaration was previously extended by the city to expire on June fifteen, twenty twenty. Because of the significance and the need to have a continuing emergency declaration for FEMA applications and for the continuation of emergency orders and for the consideration of future resulting from COVID, we are recommending that the council extend the emergency declaration for either a period of time certain or an undetermined time to be addressed at a future point for revocation by the city council. So the policy decisions to be made by the council are number one, do you wish to extend the declaration? Two, if yes, for what period of time or an indeterminate time?
Thank you. Mr. Sandy.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we extend the emergency declaration to June fifteenth, the next city council meeting, and at which point we can extend it again if necessary.
It's already June fifteenth, isn't it?
That that motion would.
Sorry, sorry. So then, I'm sorry, the first meeting in July. My apologies.
Okay, so you have a motion to extend the emergency health emergency until the first meeting in July. We have a second or further discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mock seconds. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mock.
Um, Mr. Swanson, what would be to leave the emergency declaration in place and then consider it at a later date? What what would be the benefit to making a decision of that nature versus this motion where we would reconsider it again in a month or two months and keep doing it that way?
I think there would be two potential issues. Number one, the concern would be that somewhere along the line, the timing, the expiration gets lost, and you allow it to expire. As a result of an expiration, you no longer could act under the emergency authority. All of the existing orders would become void at that point. Number two, I think there is some point of having some continuity and some expectation for businesses, individuals, including the city, to plan. By having very short-term extensions, that planning window is shortened. But it is purely a policy question for the council to address.
Thank you. Further discussion? And now we have a motion to extend the public health emergency to the first meeting in July.
Mayor Brown, just want to clarify for the record. Was that actually Ms. Dockler that seconded the motion?
Ms. Mock.
No, it was actually me.
Oh, was it?
It was.
Ms. Mock had comments after. So Ms. Dockler, correct. Thank you. Do we have a motion or second before?
Mr. Mayor. Um, if we if we extend it one month, we would bring this back again. So if we decided to extend it for a longer period at that point, we could always do that, correct?
Swanson.
Yes, the the declaration can be extended by the city council for whatever period of time you deem appropriate. The mayor no longer has the authority to extend it, so it does require action by a majority of the council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Danny.
I'm I'm not concerned that staff will forget to bring this item to the next council meeting. And as a matter of procedure, not that I distrust our mayor, I think he has everyone's best interest interest in mind. I also am very very protective of city council powers and think it's important for us to maintain and take back our powers as rapidly as possible as as things move along. And so just purely out of process, I think it's easy to put it on every council agenda, and we extend to the next council agenda, and it becomes very routine and easy, and we will never have an issue of the mayor or us missing an opportunity. That's just my opinion, though.
We have a motion and a second before us. Any further discussion?
I didn't understand. So, Mr. Sandy, did that change the?
No, my question is the same.
Very good.
A motion is second before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Yeah, item four point one.
Hi, good evening. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Maureen.
No, I was just going to read that this is for the twenty nineteen holiday hours utilization extension. Go ahead, Sandy.
Good morning, or good evening, Mayor Brown and members of the council. So before you is a request to extend the timeline for usage of the two thousand nineteen employee holiday hours that were approved in December of two thousand nineteen by the city council. The original deadline for usage was June thirtieth of twenty twenty, and the request is to extend the deadline to December fifth of twenty twenty. Several departments have been working short-staffed, extended hours, or without opportunity for leave in recent months. And so at this point, we have approximately forty percent of our city personnel that have not utilized these hours. And instead of having them lose those hours as of June thirtieth, we'd like to extend the opportunity for the usage.
Council comments?
Mayor Brown? I would like to move to approve this request. I think it makes all the sense in the world. And thank you for for bringing it forward.
Ms. Marshall motions. Do we have a second?
Ken, I'll second.
Do you want to second or make comments?
Second. I'll second.
Any, thank you. Any further comments? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Carries. Thank you. Maureen, do we have any introductions to ordinance?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. And item five, information items, five point one.
Statement of changes in cash balances as of February twenty ninth.
Item six, approval of the medicine bill, six point one.
Vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
The motion is second to pay the bills. Ms. Dockler motion. Second, do we?
Second.
Marshall seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post, bills are paid, six point two.
And the minutes from March thirtieth, April sixth, and April.
Your comment on the minutes? To approve.
As is, Mr. Mayor.
Sandy motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Marshall, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Carries. Thank you. Item seven, citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight, city administrator comments, Mr. Fionn.
Mayor Brown, just to confirm, you know, we we suspended the agenda and added an item. Four point eight, just making sure we voted on that. Did we vote on? Okay, so good. Just making sure we approve that. Thank you, Council President Sandy, for that. Just a couple of comments. Number one, thanks for all the this different meeting, but all the items on the J D A, those were, we were palling some new ground and with some new concepts in this new economy. And so thanks for all your support on that. And it's taken us some time to get there, but thank you for those. And I want to express all my appreciation. Mayor, you talked about the continuity of government. People are working across the city, not in highlighted roles, but if you look at the water treatment plant where they're working twenty-four seven in two different plants, trying to start up a water treatment facility that we haven't done in over fifty years, it's a pretty incredible thing that we're doing, and replacing infrastructure of our water plant that's from nineteen fifty-six, nineteen sixty-eight, and nineteen eighty-four are the three phases. And so thanks for all those folks that work behind the scenes delivering. And then to Dale and his staff, he was showing those dispatchers, but as part of the twenty twenty budget, we we have taken over all of the dispatching for that. That was one of the budget initiatives to save money and to bring that in-house. So the three people, three stations and the two people you saw are those people that are dispatching our dialeride senior system, two drivers that are city employees now. And so thanks for Dale for that initiative. That's a service initiative. And all that work that's gone on to renovate that building and to expand that building. And that was first built in nineteen eighty-three. So that's the first major thing that we've done there. So two historic things this evening in those, and and I would add to the J D A meeting. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all you guys do to support us under Mayor Brown so that we can deliver these things. But with that, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Next, we go to item nine. Councilman Weigel, do you have any comments? Is Weigel present? Ms. Dockler?
No.
Comments? Mr. Weber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mock?
Um, I just wanted to say, you know, this is a very difficult time, and words kind of fail to help. But people should know that there are resources available. There are all kinds of struggles going on right now. Remember, the city website does have mental health resources available. They also have housing and utility resources. Some of those CARES Act dollars are coming into other state and local agencies as well for help and various assistance. So please reach out if you need it.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall.
Thank you. I just wanted to express how how proud I am of the Grand Forks City Police Department. This has been an extraordinary week and very, very difficult. I think we are so very fortunate to be in Grand Forks and to have such a department with such integrity, all the way from the top leadership, Chief Nelson, on down through the whole family of the police department. And I just wanted to to express that. And also that my heart goes out to the family of Officer Holtie.
Thank you. Council Vice President Viad?
No, I have nothing.
Council President Sandy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just the common message that you should be nice to your friends and people that aren't your friends. Just in general, be nice. Thank you.
You. Ms. Marshall is right. It has been a tough week. We did lose Officer Cody Holtie. There's a memorial service tomorrow at one at the R E A building, and the visitation from ten to noon, both are open to the public. Sadly, we did lose two airmen at the base today. And we're devastated. This is tragic, senseless, and devastating. Given the tough times, it's good that we have the culture we have. I do agree. We're proud of our police department, proud of our community. We're welcoming President Andrew Armacost as new president of the Corps. We thank Dr. Wynn for his interim presidency and congratulations to be a health officer. In June is Heritage Immigrant Month in Grand Forks. With that, we'll take on item ten, motion to adjourn. Mr. Sandy quickly motions. Mr. Weber seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned. Thank you.